Good evening, everyone. This is the February 28th work session of the Board of Education. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Thank you. First will be public forum. Mr. Schwartz.
I will read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves. Statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond during this forum to statements made by speakers. Statements should relate to Charles County Board of Education agenda items or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Personal matters, pending potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language in the quorum are required at all times. We have seventeen speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Joshua Barrett.
Hello. How you doing, everyone?
Evening.
I don't know when my time starts or...
Right now. If you got three minutes, you should get a beep at thirty seconds.
My name is Joshua Barrett. I'm a longtime citizen here in Charles County all my life. Went to first and twelfth grade in this county. Well, I'm here to bring awareness to the parents and children of this great county and great community, bring awareness of this mask mandate. Reason being, I asked my children during the Super Bowl, what do you guys feel about the masks? Because they said, Daddy, these guys ain't wearing masks, or, you know. I was like, well, son, there's circumstances here, and I can't elaborate to them because they're just little children. While we're here, Governor Hogan lifted all mask mandates at all government buildings last week. CDC has declared Charles County has a low risk as of last week. This virus is airborne. It's smaller than .1 micron, smaller than any water vapor. You can wear forty-five M95 masks together, and it will not stop this virus, Omicron, Delta, or any other previous variants. Just remember, any attempt to practice medicine without a license is a criminal defense. And also, you can't prove these protocols work. This is profoundly damaging our children. Children in school need to see one another's faces. They need to see each other's smile. They need to interact with one another without even saying a word. It's just sad that it's taken this long for me to stand here at this podium and this long to even have this discussion, while I hope you guys know how to read a tape measure, fifteen sixteenths of the rest of the country is doing different than what we're doing here in Charles County. Like I said, I was born and raised here. I take pride in this county. I love this county with a passion. Probably, I don't know. I don't know. I can't say that, that anybody can match how I feel about this county. But last but not least, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. This is a position that you can judge the value of society and its values by how it treats our children, every single one of you. Different kinds of shades of color, doesn't matter. I just want these kids to have everything in life. I just want these children to have everything. And we shouldn't be right here now as I speak, but I don't like to show my children I break rules. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paige Burns.
Okay. Good evening. I'm appearing today to present a statement on behalf of Ally Rock for Reopen Charles County LLC and Coalition of Maryland Parents LLC. Dear Members of the Board of Education of Charles County, thank you for hosting the public comment this evening and your commitment to resuming normal operations as we approach the second anniversary of two weeks to flatten the curve. I'm also grateful that you're discussing the removal of the local mandate to wear masks in Charles County public schools, though I wish you had called a special meeting last week for the purpose, as nineteen other jurisdictions did. Several did not even hold a vote, but rather knew that in the absence of a mandate, they had nothing to enforce on the local level and did not need a decision by the Board of Education. Nevertheless, I appeal to you this evening to vote for the immediate end of the mask mandate in Charles County and a mask optional policy beginning tomorrow. The urgency with which we need to return to normal pre-COVID experiences for our youth cannot be understated. At this time last year, Charles County was the latest to return children to in-person learning, which was a political move by this board to allow teachers weeks to be vaccinated, contrary to the guidance by the governor and MSD at the time. Please do not make children and exhausted teachers political pawns any longer. Unless living under a rock, the entire state knows that MSD's mask rule was rescinded last week and that Charles would be one of only three jurisdictions holding out on a decision at this point. There is no need for a delay of even one more day. Furthermore, the failure of this board to unmask children will result in reopen Charles County and Coalition of Maryland Parents utilizing every resource to unmask our children through our court system. Absent a state of emergency, a state mandate, or a new policy written and codified by this board for a more permanent masking policy, there really is no authority to continue an emergency health policy such as masking. I implore you to vote for a March 1st effective date for a mask optional policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Dietrich.
My daughter recently got sent home as a close contact. She was sent home for seven days. It's longer than the five-day CDC recommendation. Dr. Navarro told me that the CCPS works with our Department of Health, so sometimes some additional precautions will be issued in your guidance. Still not sure why additional precautions were necessary, with our metrics being some of the best in the country and improving. But anyway, my daughter had to miss Mesa, a celebration for her kindness bracelet, and her speech for Black History Month, which she was chosen to give over the morning announcements. Now, her friend who tested positive was asymptomatic, but a weekly testing done at the school through your school testing program. She was able to return to school before my daughter could. The testing program was meant to keep schools open, but all it really did was send healthy kids home. But to be honest with you, that wasn't the most frustrating part. Most frustrating was, while my daughter was upset about missing Mesa, her celebration and her speech, she was excited not to have to go to school. She was excited to stay home. My son was jealous of her. She said, why do I have to go to school when she gets to stay home with you? They're in fourth and second grade. At this age, school should still be fun for them. They should want to be in there. But let me ask you, would you want to be in school right now? The youngest kids, they stuck on their masks all day. They get wet, they continue to wear them. The kids haven't been able to see their friends' faces, the teachers' faces, their smiles. On top of that, they haven't been able to go to field trips, and many extracurriculars were canceled. Parents were even kept away from sporting events just a month ago. You've completely fractured the homeschool connection. I used to have opportunities to read to my kids at school. I used to take them lunch about once a month. I volunteered at their field days. It's no secret that behavior has been a problem at schools this year. You've taken away all incentive for them to do well. Instead of award ceremonies where parents are allowed in to celebrate our kids' achievements, you have stuffed certificates in your backpacks and send them home. One year ago, we were one of the last remaining counties in the country to go back to in-person learning. And let me remind you, that was just to get to Phase Two. You pushed back Phase Two, saying the right thing to do was to keep the kids home. Phase Two only allowed ESL, special needs, kids without internet, and teachers', kids' and your kids' to go back to school. You drug your feet, and kids suffered. Now we are once again watching you drag your feet to be one of the last counties in the country to make a decision. New York City will be mask optional in a week. In fact, mask mandates just dropped on Capitol Hill today, just in time for the State of the Union. So when you go in and vote on this tonight, you're deciding whether you want to end this immediately and be one of the last counties in the country to drop this mandate, or do you want to let this go on for like another week or so, and maybe we can be the last county in the country to have this mandate? Either way, your decision should come with an apology and a promise to never do this again, not to me, not to the parents, but to the kids. These kids have had their childhood stripped away. Field trips, dances, sports, clubs, graduations have been stolen. Their lives have been disrupted. Joy of learning was stolen. It's going to take a long time to fix this. I can't speak for all the parents, but I know I'm going to remember who did this. The kids are going to remember who did this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Marie Griffith. Not here. Our next speaker is Will Lewis.
Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Navarro, my name is Will Lewis, and I'm a teacher at St. Charles High School. Two years ago, Governor Hogan announced that Maryland schools would pause for two weeks because of a virus we knew little about but would soon come to dominate our lives. He was hopeful we would return after two weeks, but we all know how that ended up. From then until now, this Board of Education has faced challenges no previous board could have dreamed of facing. You were asked to make incredibly difficult decisions, often with little or incomplete information, or with information being handed to you right as you started a meeting. You had to deal with ever-changing guidance from Washington and Annapolis and the politics of facing a pandemic during a presidential election year. On top of that all, this board was tasked with hiring a new superintendent to lead the school system, all within two years. Throughout all of this, you've worked to make decisions to put the health and the best interest of every single CCPS stakeholder, our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, and most importantly, our students at the forefront. You had to stand in the breach and make some of the hardest decisions any elected official could have been asked to make, knowing full well there wasn't a perfect choice and there wasn't a right answer. For all of this, you deserve a thank you. Because of your actions, we found a way to finish out the 1920 school year. We kept everyone safe and learning as best we could in the 2020-2021 school year. We partnered with the Charles County Department of Health to get staff and students vaccinated, and we hired a great new superintendent. And I don't just say that because she's sitting behind me and can throw something at me. And we reopened our schools for a full-time, in-person instruction in the fall, all while facing two new COVID variants that completely changed the COVID-19 landscape in Delta and Omicron. These are accomplishments that should not be dismissed. I know it's trendy to go on social media and criticize Board of Educations and this Board of Education because they have the benefit of hindsight that wasn't available to any of you as you had to make incredibly difficult decisions. It's easy to say what should have been done long after a decision was made and new information is available. It's also easy to be a keyboard warrior and lob hurtful and often baseless allegations at members of this Board of Education and Board of Educations across the country. I just want you to know that a lot of members of the CCPS community are appreciative of the care that you've taken and the concern that you show. Tonight, you'll consider about removing a mask mandate for CCPS, and I ask you to think about the data once more. The data tells us it's probably time to make masks optional. I know that will make some uneasy, but advances in prevention, treatment, and testing make it possible and doable. I also want to ask you to commit to keep following the data and the science as we move forward. During this pandemic, your efforts, your thoughtfulness, and your concern for every single stakeholder in CCPS has been much appreciated. It hasn't gone unnoticed, and it won't be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Kristin Lucas.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Kristin Lucas. I have three children in the Charles County Public School System, two kindergartners and a second grader, and I am here tonight on their behalf. I don't have fancy statistics to present, and I don't know that my words will be earth-shattering or profound, but I couldn't let this opportunity to speak up for them and for kids and other parents across the county go without at least trying. My plea to you tonight is to please make masks optional in our schools, for our children, for our teachers, for our staff. Allow parents to make the choice to what they feel is best for their children. Strapped in a sweaty, saliva-soaked mask for six hours a day, not being able to see their teachers, their friends' faces, learning impairment, that's not what's best for my kids, not at all. Allow teachers to make the choice of how they feel most comfortable teaching, and if that's in a mask, then that's their choice. But if it's not in a mask, that should also be their choice. The governor, the Board of, State Board of Education, and this county's own superintendent have all been supportive of making the mask mandate, making masks optional in school, and I would ask you to do the same. I have friends in other states that are shocked, friends and family, that are shocked that our kids are still forced to wear a mask at school every day. My family and I go out into the community all the time without masks, and that freedom and that sense of normalcy is wonderful, and I want that for my kids and for my kids' friends and their teachers in the school as well. It's very important to me. Just this past weekend, my daughter attended a birthday party with classmates from her class indoors, and she was thrilled to be able to converse with them, play with them without being strapped in a mask, and that was great. And then she goes to school and then has to sit next to those same kids with a mask on. Doesn't make any sense. To me, it's a charade. In our community, we can dine in close quarters with fifty-plus strangers, you know, opening our mouths, food in and out, but yet the kids have to go to school and sit next to the same, what, twenty, fifteen kids every day and don't have that freedom. So this has gone on long enough, I think, and I think it's time for us to, that are not fearful anymore, to be able to make that choice for ourselves. It's, I think it just needs to be over. The group least affected by COVID is the group that is most affected by these masks, and they just need to come off. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Our next speaker is Ashley Moore.
Hi. How are you? My name is Ashley Moore. I've lived in Charles County my whole life. My son's in Charles County Public Schools, and he will remain there. Charles County has always done what they thought was best for our kids, and I commend you, but it's time to end the mask mandate. Charles County positivity rate is 1.88% for COVID. The mask mandate needs to end. I'm keeping it short and sweet because that's the only thing that matters right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Our next speaker is Darlene Persons.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darlene Persons. I have two granddaughters that go to Charles County Public Schools. They are in eighth and first grade. I am here to speak for them and many other children that are affected by the mask mandate regulation that now has been rescinded by the MSD and the AELR last week. Nineteen out of twenty-four school districts in Maryland already decided to go mask optional by March 1st, most without having a vote or having a meeting as this one. There's absolutely no reason to prolong this mask mandate any longer. Hospitalizations are below four hundred in Maryland. The case rate is seven per one hundred thousand, and the positivity is 1.88% in Charles County. The CDC updated their transmission levels, and Charles County is in a low transmission. Masks are not recommended for low or medium-healthy people, and that includes schools. The CDC also does not require masks on school buses, so there is no reason for our kids to wear masks one more day. If you really care about our children, you will end the mask mandate today. Everyone knows that children are mildly affected by this virus and how wonderful that really is, but the adults have told the children, we don't care that you are the least affected. We are going to force you to cover your nose and your mouth where you breathe for seven to eight hours a day. This is not in their best interest. These kids can't learn or play in a normal way, but we don't care. Wear the damn mask. Shame on all of you if you don't end the mask mandate today. It is not March 2020 anymore. It is February 28, 2022, two years since this has started. Here is a poem from anonymous author that really speaks for our children that have been wearing these masks for almost two years. Mama, build me another world, a world with all my friends, a world where people have a face, a world where I can breathe and run and explore with no fear or intimidation, a world where I'm not made to feel whole because I choose to be free, a world where people think for themselves, a world where people look forward to each other and are not afraid of each other, a world where I do not have to be the victim because of an agenda. Please unmask our children now. Unmask the kids' smile, and as my first-grade granddaughter drew this picture of herself smiling, throwing away her mask, saying, please allow her and all the other children to throw away their mask and allow the parents to decide what is best for their own children. We need to be mask optional on March 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Douglas Rose.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Douglas Rose, and I appreciate this opportunity to comment. Over the past two years, what's been evident to anyone paying attention to CDC data underlying COVID is that it has been inconsistent. Deaths and hospitalizations with and from COVID have constantly been conflated, especially in any detectable public records referenced by this board. Early on, the CDC counted suicides, dementia, falls from bridges, and car accidents among COVID deaths. Variants of this trend continued up until January of this year, when the CDC director admitted there was still no fidelity in COVID hospitalization and case data. Approximately ten days after that, Health and Human Services stopped requiring states to report COVID deaths and significantly changed case reporting guidelines. Tests that we've been told to rely on have been routinely exposed as faulty, yet the mask mandate remains. What does this mean? It means that cases and hospitalization rates, as broadly represented by this body, have never been the right metric for any action by any agent of the government, especially ones like this board that has consistently demonstrated an unwillingness or inability to explain their approaches in a data-driven way. I have months of cordial emails to every single member of this board asking for very simple, data-driven questions that have gone unanswered. I asked you why you decided to exceed the CDC's definition of fully vaccinated, and county documentation received no answer. I asked for an explanation or even an outline of the data that this board relied upon to impose mask mandates and was met with silence. Transparency matters. My questions were, what specific data have you based your decisions on? How exactly have you factored in inconsistencies in CDC data when making your decisions? And how exactly has this analysis been applied by every member of this board? Why have you done nothing to address the leading comorbidity associated with actual COVID deaths? You claim to take lifesaving actions but haven't acknowledged the inconsistent science at hand or highlighted your methods to mitigate it. Where medical findings are crystal clear, as in the case of that leading comorbidity, you haven't based your actions on those medical findings. Why is that? Why are none of you on record publicly when answered to these questions? As an academic and a parent, I teach my kids the power of precision and the value of critical thought. You are the body responsible for making sure all kids are taught these lessons, yet you are unwilling or unable to demonstrate how you depend on these tenants of reasonable action. That's all I'm looking for, reasonable action. Your silence leaves the members of our community to infer that you side with the Department of Health, who is on record identifying the pandemic as an opportunity to prevent a return to normal. Disease and death should not be politicized. I'll close with this. Precision matters, community matters, mental health matters, speech and social development matter, and votes matter. Unmask the kids. Thank you.
The rest of our speakers are virtual. I'll turn it over to Ms. Mackey.
Our first virtual speaker is Jennifer Blain. Ms. Blain, can you unmute the charge of time, please? Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. My name is Jennifer Blain. Two of my children have graduated from Charles County Public Schools, and my youngest is currently enrolled at North Point High School. I joined this meeting to ask you to make masks optional in our schools effective tomorrow, March 1st. Parents and children want the freedom to choose when to wear masks. That freedom was taken away two years ago. Give us back our freedom to choose, and I ask you to commit never take that freedom away again, regardless of your beliefs, data, or government suggestions. I am asking you to decide for yourself now to never take our freedoms away again. Nothing should supersede our constitutional rights. Please make masks optional in our schools effective tomorrow, March 1st. Thank you. Our next speaker is Miranda Colson. Ms. Colson, can you unmute the charge of time, please?
Hi. Thank you. My name is Miranda Colson. Tonight's my first time to speak at the school board meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to stand for something that I believe in and to stand for my daughter. I believe that all our kids should have the option to not wear masks to school. There are many reasons why I decided to speak to you tonight. I haven't been allowed to attend my daughter's award ceremonies in person for two years. She's only seven years old. There are minimal volunteer opportunities at the school as well. I'm a military parent, so being able to be there for my daughter is very important to me as we don't have any family around. As a parent, I feel that I have been taken out of the picture. We do not need a new normal. We need to go back to normal. The kids are begging to not have to wear a mask. My daughter is seven, and she told me not to get my hopes up, that they would probably still have to wear a mask. We need to have hope, and I sincerely hope that you will not take, or that you will take into consideration that a seven-year-old little girl no longer wants to go to school because she is required to wear a mask. Also, consider her classmate who got sick at school last week and threw up in her mask. The children are afraid to take off their mask at school and are willing to throw up in their mask rather than risk getting in trouble. This madness needs to end. Please consider what this is doing to our children's mental health. I would also like to share some things that my daughter told me. She said, well, why can't I talk to them? It's me that's having to wear the mask, so why can't I speak to them? And so I asked her, I said, well, let me know what you want me to tell them. And so I wrote it down, and I'm going to tell you what my seven-year-old said. She said, I don't like to wear the mask because it is hot, and when you sneeze in it and raise your hand, you have to wait for the teacher to call on you to get a tissue and a new mask. Also, after recess, I am hot and have to put my mask on. I do not like wearing a mask, especially when I'm hot. Also, one of my friends doesn't like wearing the mask, and we are hoping that all the schools in the county will make the masks optional. The masks are not soft and pulls on your ears. I don't like wearing masks because you can't see whether I am smiling or making a silly face. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Karen Cross. Ms. Cross, if you could unmute, please.
Hi. Yes, Karen Cross. I have a senior at St. Charles High School. I have written many times to many different Charles County Public School employees, and most of the time, when I get a response, it's basically, you know, about data, and we're following the data, and we're following CDC guidelines and MSD and all of these things. So when making health decisions for the children in Charles County Public Schools, I'm sure you must be aware of the plummeting COVID cases in our state and county recently. The latest numbers from yesterday show that our county is at 1.88% positivity rate, which is lower than the state at 2.25%. Our case rate in our county is one, per one hundred thousand, is at seven, and the state of Maryland is 8.92. Or maybe you're paying attention to the CDC guidelines and recommendations. Just Friday, they announced that they will no longer require masks on buses or vans operated by public or private school systems, including early care and childcare programs. And as someone mentioned earlier, we are now at a low transmission rate in Charles County. Or maybe you've heard that Governor Hogan took away the mask mandate and government bans. Or maybe you've heard that Governor Hogan took away the mask mandate in government buildings last Monday and also asked MSD to get rid of the statewide mandate in schools. Perhaps you heard that in December. One of the most avid proponents of mask mandates, Dr. Leanna Wen, who is a medical analyst for CNN, made a claim, one that many of us have been making for a long time, since before you guys are now looking at this, that cloth masks are little more than facial decorations. I've watched all of this roll in and have spent many hours contacting you to get a commitment from Dr. Navarro and the board since Tuesday to unmask our children. That was when the Maryland State Board of Education voted to rescind the statewide mask mandate and all of the off-ramps in Maryland Public Schools. So I eventually received private confirmation from Dr. Navarro that she would remove the mandate the moment that MSBE and consequently AELR allowed it. But the only public statements we have received are kind of in code, leaving the public to determine the meaning behind them, all of this while other counties are announcing a mask optional status even over the weekend. One year ago, Maryland was ranked for in-person learning with 8.4% of our students in school, and other states were 100%. We were last for getting our kids back in school, and we were waiting and waiting for you to allow our kids to go back. You waited until the teachers could be vaccinated, and you postponed. So here we are again, waiting with bated breath to see how Charles County is going to handle the situation. I certainly hope you do not plan on postponing this. These masks need to come off our children now. Not next week, not next month, not after spring break, or whenever you guys are thinking about doing this. It needs to happen now, tomorrow. So we'll be watching the remainder of the meeting, and we're going to pay close attention to what you say. And while I'm happy that COVID numbers are good, I'm never going to sit by again and let you use those metrics to keep my child in a mask or take an experimental vaccine or a test ever. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Crystal Kuduski. Ms. Kuduski, if you could unmute, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Board members, thank you for the time to speak today on behalf of parents and students in Charles County schools. I was here a few weeks ago to implore you, using my own personal story of making my own masks and bleaching everything to a more reasoned, logic-based approach to remove the mask mandate and fight for Charles County students and teachers to make their own personal medical decisions. Apparently, the CDC has finally given the green light and changed the metrics for the low, medium, and high transmission rates. Hallelujah, COVID is over. Well, we know it will never be over. It will always be here. But we know enough as individuals how to get treatment early on to avoid complications. Yes, early treatment lessens severity and saves lives. The frontline critical care, FLCC treatment, has been so helpful to my family. But that isn't why I'm here tonight. I'm here to make sure you are aware, another emergency may come, another perceived social threat may come. But the power wielded by the MSBE, the superintendent of Charles County Schools in summer 2021, this board, the commissioners, the state, and even the federal government, all in the name of keeping us safe, is power that has gone too far. How is it that health policies such as masks and shots became your wheelhouse, your area of expertise, gave you your ability to impose medical devices such as masks and interventions such as testing and shots on every child in the public school system? This also extended its tentacles to public use of buildings with outside groups such as 4H. This affects our whole community. You do not have this authority. You fool the public once, shame on us. That fooling has lasted two years now. People are tired of being told what's best to keep their families safe as if they don't know. Hindsight is always 2020. I hope you realize, as a board, you have overstepped your authority. Stick to education and the system. Children are failing. Teachers are suffering worse than they ever have with all the extra stress. Between the virtual, the mental health of masks and quarantining with isolation, and the constant strain of the unknown on kids, you have caused this mess. The constant saying the last two years is, kids are resilient, will not come to pass for so many kids who will end up needing therapy from policies you have put in place. Kids were never in the high category of severe outcomes. Protect the vulnerable and let the healthy live their lives, knowing the risks. If you've never heard of the Great Barrington Declaration, you should look it up. Where there is risk, there must be choice. Unmask the kids and never, ever mandate a medical device or intervention on them again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuduski. Our next speaker is Joshua Torres. Mr. Torres, if you could unmute and start, please.
Good evening, everybody. Just off the cuff here, I really, I don't have a lot to say. I mean, I have some things, but it just, I feel like it's already been said. I mean, AELR voted on it on Friday. You all saw that. We saw MSD rescinded the mask mandate. So to me, it's a moot point at this point in time. And I just want to thank you to all the panelists who showed up to speak up for the kids tonight. That is awesome. And I really wish I had you a year ago, but you're here tonight, so thank you so much because it's very important. I guess I'll start with a quote that was in mind. "A willing suspension of disbelief can only last for so long." And what I mean by this is this disbelief that we could have been lied to from some of the highest officials, that this entire pandemic was more about control and compliance than it was about a virus and protecting people. Now thankfully, more and more people are seeing what's going on, and they're doing something about it. They're saying, no, this is enough. We will not comply. Just recently, I just saw something that the CDC lowered the standards on speech and language comprehension for young children, something to that effect. I mean, I really don't see how we would ever trust an organization like that that does that. I mean, why are we still listening to the CDC? I get it, they're official, so we got to go by them when it comes to health and disease. But I mean, this is ridiculous. I mean, two years this has been going on. It's enough. It needs to stop tonight. And like, I got to say, I'm a little disappointed because we're one of the last school districts in Maryland to rescind this mask mandate. I mean, school districts did it over the weekend, sent the email out. So I don't know why we're here having this, you know? It's just, it's ridiculous. I do have, I'll end with a little anecdote here. I did have a student come up to me, and he's like, Mr. Torres, I'm so glad that you don't force, you know, make a big fuss about these masks. And I told him, you know what, buddy? I never will, because that's your choice. That's his choice. It's a medical decision. It's not my job to tell a kid to put a mask up over his or her face for seven hours a day. It's ridiculous. I mean, I would really hope that we never, ever go to this again, that people's rights aren't trampled on. I mean, this is ridiculous. Like, I'm beside myself. I can't believe this has gone on for two years. And I understand you all have a tough job to do. I get it. I know it's not easy, but this has gone on for way too long, way too long. I don't have anything else to say. I just, stop the mandate now. It needs to end tomorrow. This needs to be people's individual choices. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Our final speaker this evening is Danielle Treditt. Ms. Treditt, can you ask Ms. Colson to unmute, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, board members. Tonight, I come to you as a mother of a former high schooler with children in grade eight and kindergarten. We took our 10th grader out of school when she felt all was lost. No eighth grade formal or graduation. Eighth grade was when we were sent home, you know, to flatten the curve. Ninth grade was a blur. She was just happy to be getting back to school half the week. 10th grade, still no homecoming. Aunts were wearing masks. She couldn't even sit with her friends at lunch due to contact tracing and social distancing guidelines. Every day weighed on her mental health, so we decided to homeschool. Our eighth grader is holding out for a formal and graduation. By lifting most restrictions and making masks optional, she is very hopeful. Our kindergartner hasn't had a field trip. Her first awards ceremony, we're on Zoom. She didn't get to see her parents beaming with pride and support. Her accomplishments, I couldn't even see her cheeky little smile behind that ridiculous mask. Lifting the mask mandate and making masks optional will give us so much hope in moving forward to normalcy. In our schools, parents will hopefully be allowed back to school events, and we can end the drive-throughs and Zoom assemblies and workshops where parents will be welcome back to Beaver Fund Runs, fundraisers, field days, Halloween parades, and reading nights. There was once a time when parents were wanted in schools and not borrowed from them. If you live in a small community like me and you, you know how important these things are to students, parents, and teachers. Our teachers, God bless them, are doing their very best and have nothing short of been amazing, making school a fun experience even with all restrictions and limitations. With vaccines readily available to any school age or adult who wants them and making masks optional, those who still want to wear one can. There is no reason not to lift this mandate today. We have flattened the curve, yay. Let's take this as a win and not a defeat. Stand with the parents and students of Charles County Public Schools and not against them. This vote is for your reelection. Remember, it depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Treditt. Mr. Lucas, that was our final speaker for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Okay, folks, we're going to move through the agenda. And next up is Dr. Navarro.
Good afternoon, board members. Joining me at the table is Dr. Jeff Nelson. Dr. Nelson is the CEO of Targeted Leadership, and he has been working with us, with the leadership team, to put together the draft that is before you today, which is our, my work around the strategic plan for the school system. And so part of his work has been to facilitate our retreat where we had central office leadership as well as principals and our union presidents, both AFSCME and EACC with us. And so his next step is to help facilitate the discussion and the work session that we are going to have today regarding the strategic plan. So I will pass it over to him to introduce what we're going to do tonight.
Great, thank you. Good evening. It's a privilege to be here with you this evening, and we want to make this as effective a use of your time as possible. So I'm going to ask that Dr. Navarro goes through the presentation as it is. It will no doubt trigger connections for you while you're listening. It may trigger questions for you while you're listening. And I encourage you to take notes and jot down those questions. But I would like to ask that she is able to go through the entire presentation uninterrupted. At that point, we will come back and go through again in a more open context where you will be able to share the thoughts you had and be able to raise any questions that you have until everyone has a good, clear understanding of what's contained and what the ramifications for the next three to five years might be for the district. At that point, we'll be asking you for any suggestions, recommendations, and an indication of support for the plan so that it can begin to move forward, and the implementation teams can begin to address the different issues. Any questions about that process? Are we okay with waiting and hearing the presentation first? Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Dr. Navarro?
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. So as this is a work session, this is a word document that is coming to you because you are the board and because part of this process is for the board to give me feedback as we move forward. So as you brought me on in July of this past year, part of my work has been to be out and about in the community, talking to our staff, talking to community stakeholders, talking to parents, to students, and really listening to hear where we want to be as a school system. And we are, and we started the year in a very tricky school year, very different from normal, because we started with welcoming students back to in-person learning. That was a priority for us. And as people made that transition, we were also asking them to think about, where is the school system going to be three to five years from now? So it was an opportunity to have conversations on the weekends, in the evenings, during school hours. Anywhere I could, I tried to engage with stakeholders. But to be able to massively get some input, we put out a survey, which I am so grateful to our community, that parents, staff members, and students really took time to do. And so what you see at the bottom is a survey that we conducted from December 15th to January 5th. You would say it's like some of the busiest time of the year, but we got a great turnout. Thank you to parents. Close to 4,000 parents completed a survey telling us what do they think about their schools, what's working, and what are some things that are not and that they would like to give us feedback on. We had close to 3,400 staff members, and our students showed out. Thank you so much to the students. We had close to 7,000 students. So when you ask for student voice, guess what? They give it to you. And they had a lot to say. And I will tell you, and I think most of you know, that's my weekend reading and evening reading. I read through the open responses for all of these survey results. And it was incredible feedback that we received. With that data, we then brought together a team, the leadership of central office, my leadership team. We also needed principals, and so we asked the principals to self-nominate a principal from every level, elementary, middle, and high school, to come join our strategic retreat. And then we asked the people that represent all of our employees, our union presidents, to also come and join us. And we went away for two days. A lot of people were worried about, how are we going to take two days? At one of those days, there was no students in the building, so we timed it correctly. And we talked about the data that I gathered from having community meetings, parent meetings, visiting PTSOs, talking to students, as well as those three large surveys and looking at the data. And what came out of there is that although CCPS is going to have to focus on a lot of operational pieces, the core important work is still the core important work. And those things are student learning and achievement, access and opportunities, and culture and climate. And that is after looking a lot about the data. And those are the three areas that we collectively, as a school system, want to prioritize and focus on as we move forward in the next three to five years. So let me go into some details about what I mean with those areas. The first thing around student learning and achievement, it is that our focus is on student learning. And if we are focused on student learning, we, as a school system, will achieve and will see continual improvement in our achievement scores. That is, if we're all focused on student learning. And to be able to do so, it is imperative that we go back and invest and reinvest in how we support those that teach our students every single day. And those are our teaching staff. And so what you see here is that every student in every school or every program has access to grade-level, rigorous curriculum that challenges and prepares them for whatever they decide to do after they leave us and graduate. And in order to do that, we must double down and reinvest in our teachers and our staff who are educators in front of students. And so what we do is we move to thinking about, moving away from a professional development concept to really focus on embedding professional learning. And so you'll say, what's the difference between professional development and professional learning? Well, if you think about it, professional development is something that happens to teachers. Please come to the workshop that will be provided on this date, on that day, and so forth. Rather, we want to create learning environments where all the adults are continuously interacting, discussing with peers, looking at data to inform what they're doing. And it is continuous, and it's based on their needs, and those are professional learning communities rather than professional development. It sounds kind of similar. It is a huge frame shift from what we currently practice, how we schedule days, how we look at school calendars, how we look at time. And this is one of the major shifts. And this is one of the major shifts, that in order to value the input and the strengths of our people that are in front of kids, we really need to create professional learning environments. And so here you see a lot about how we want to spend time, potentially look at additional time, reuse time, for our teachers and our educators to spend time learning. The second goal is that every student receives impactful academic programming if they are above or below grade-level expectations. And that's important to note, above or below grade-level expectations. And so the work that we do, the investments that we do, the purchasing that we move forward, the decisions that we move forward about programs in schools, need to be focused on evidence-based results and need to make sure that we hone in on supporting the decisions that impact student learning the most, the lesson planning, the student actual learning experience, what is the actual learning experience that they have in the classroom, how we monitor progress, and I'm excited to come next week to talk about our student progress, and how we actually have a variety of academic programs that are tailored to the specific needs of students. So how are we going to evaluate this? We have to evaluate, and we must be transparent in the results. You'll hear me talk a little bit more about developing a dashboard that comes from me to report to the board around our metrics for progress. What you see here are the specific set of metrics for student progress that we will bring forward. We'll start next week to talk a little bit about our iReady data, but we'll also bring a combination of the state assessments as well as the curriculum embedded assessments, which are powerful tools to assess how, what students are learning throughout the year, not a one-time basis but a continual basis. We've also put out there that we will talk about our baseline of progress based on how, what is the percentage of second graders that are reading above or on grade level, no longer three, but second grade, at the end of second grade. And we've also talked about mathematics, meeting that grade-level expectation before they transition to middle school. When we talk about professional learning, we go beyond metrics of participation, and we talk about what are the percentage of classrooms consistently applying, applying the professional learning that we have teachers and staff participate in. That then, by default, creates a set of tools that we will develop and a set of experiences and requirements for our instructional leaders to be able to be in and out of classrooms and seeing what is actually happening in classrooms, and that's extremely important. When we talk about access and opportunity, I would say that no measure of progress can really be made if the institution itself does not address the barriers that are impacting student learning and achievement. And so in the next three to five years, we have prioritized, and this is the best hair design that I have seen, so whoever's mom or dad, would have been dad in this household, does this hair do, I want to know, because there's about six bows in that hair. To be able to talk about access and opportunity, one of the first non-negotiables, and you have heard this from me, you hear it from the blueprint, is we need to ramp up our access to early learning. And so we're talking about expanding four-year-old seats to pre-K from half-day to full-day, but continuing to think about those models as inclusive models of learning, so not separating students with disabilities or differences from their peers, but rather expanding into programs where they learn together. And then one thing that I think is important is we will do greater efforts in making sure that we collaborate with our community pre-K programs, not just because the blueprint demands it from us, but because we actually need those community partners to work alongside in terms of how many students we support in early learning programs. And you see that we've sort of put a line in the sand that says that our metric will be the KRA assessments, that we will have students approaching or demonstrating in all four domains of KRA as we expand the programming. Our second strategy is that we will focus on programs that level the playing field for students, specifically by, in the next three to five years, focusing on implementing a two-way immersion language program that begins at the elementary level, does not end there. Once you have that option, families will be very, very vocal about their interest in continuing on to middle and high school, that we increase high school pathway courses in middle school, that we expand dual enrollment and AP classes, and also offer expanded options for early college programs, and that we increase CTE certification and pathways specifically in those that we know are competitive, that earn competitive wages for our students or that have a high need in the workspace. We'll also be focused on revising the criteria for early entry or entry into programs, and you will start seeing this when we come to you later this next month, to describe the summer programming that will offer more flexibility for students to take on additional classes to advance, and we'll look at things like evening and summertime as vehicles to advance their coursework. So how do we evaluate? Obviously, for pre-K, we're going to be following enrollment and the expansion and the KRA, the kindergarten readiness assessment results. For two-way immersion, we will be coming to you to talk about the progress of identifying site or a set of sites and really implementing the program, starting in the early grades and continuing it through the next several years. For middle school, we talked about high school courses available in middle schools, so we see ourselves developing a dashboard that allows you to see which courses are being offered, and then how many students are participating, and how are they doing, right? So we want students both to participate, but we want them to excel so that they earn the credit and they can have more space and flexibility in their high school schedules. For CTE, career technical education, we talk about the completion of pathways and obviously increasing the participation so that we know that every student is connected in some way to what's going to happen after they graduate. And then the dual enrollment and early college programs, we've talked quite a bit about expanding in future years so that this program is available in all of our seven high schools, and that the number of students that are participating are doing well, are either earning the certificate or eventually earning the associate's degree, which is ultimately what we want for students participating in high school. Finally, when we talked about culture and climate, we really think that in order to actualize those values that we have, that you have as a board, we need to see the type of culture and climate in every classroom, in every school, in every department within central office that reflects a community that values student engagement and that we are supporting student learning and achievement throughout. So in order to do that, we talked about having a goal that ensures that kids feel welcome, engaged, and safe in their school environment. In order to do that, we see it as very important that every single school and center develops a climate strategy as part of their continuous improvement plan. And we call it continuous improvement because we see our schools continuously thinking about how to improve on their metrics, and one of their metrics should definitely be a specific climate strategy, right? We can always think about how to do that. And there is no better year to think about baselining what our expectations are and rethinking than this year, when we know that students have really suffered through so many experiences, and it's important for us to think about that and make it part of the core work of schools. The second thing is expanding options for extracurricular activities, and I look forward to conversations on how to do that, how to fund that, where that happens. But it's important for us to actually think about who has access and who has the opportunity to participate and who does not. And we need to think about that, not just in organized settings like high schools, but we need to start at the elementary level. And so it's a different way of not just saying, we're just going to see how many extracurricular activities there are and which schools have them and which schools don't have them, but more importantly, understand which students need them and do they have access to them. So as we think about evaluating this specific strategy, we will be coming back to the board discussing the completion of continuous improvement plans in every single school, what that looks like, how do we know that they're being completed and that there's actually a climate strategy and that we know what the impact of that strategy is. All of those things, we think, are important metrics for us to design and come back and report on. We will also be monitoring very careful the number of referrals and number of students suspended. That is not data that is new. It's data that the school should always report on, and we want to make it more public and more continuous in the way we report on it, and more importantly, how we address it. And then we will be talking about the participation and the number of options in extracurricular activities and how we see active school-community partnerships. So the number, but in a way not just the number, but the level of depth and breadth in which those community partnerships impact our student learning. So next steps. So I am here tonight to hear your feedback, your questions, gather some information, as Dr. Nelson mentioned, so that this draft can be finalized. And it is my hope that in the next several months, I can talk to the community about that they took the time to complete surveys, to talk to me, and so now I need to go back to them and tell them, here's why your information collectively drove us to put this strategic plan, and here's what we plan to do, and here's what we plan to measure. And my measure is to come to the board with a set of metrics to show progress in those areas. We will also be aligning the district staff, starting with the central office, so that their work is focused on meeting those metrics. There will be a series, excuse me, of tools that will need to be developed, as well as a series of sub-metrics, if you will, that they need to follow closely in order to bubble up sort of the system-wide metric that we're looking at. And that reorganization of their work, how they meet, how often they meet, what data are they looking at, and what's their fundamental core work is part of reorganizing to meet the expectations and the focused work of this strategic plan. We will also be working on an accountability dashboard that is tied to the strategic plan, and the plan for that is to work through the summer to be able to come in the fall and present to you on the metrics that we have as a result of this school year, which would be a baseline for a lot of these metrics, but also next school year, the metrics that we will need to start taking as a baseline for next year, and to come to the board and present to the board on those metrics multiple times during this school year. So with that, I think I stop talking, and I listen next, as you have asked me to do. Thank you.
There are several of us who are taking notes on what you'll be raising, so we'll make sure that this is all captured. There are five parts to this presentation. The first three or four slides comprise the first part, and that is information about how the community was involved in helping to identify these priorities and to help begin creating this draft of the strategic plan. So if we can go back to the first section, what comments or questions do you have about how this document and these priorities were generated?
Ms. Wilson?
Yes?
Great presentation. Question, given the fact that we have 26,000-plus students, obviously, you did a great job in getting 6,900-plus. Is there a plan to circle back and to capture their input as well as the parents that may have been missed? Because so often, as you know, we have hearings like this, and we put forth a great presentation, and we move forward on a goal and objective, and a lot of times, there are some folks, six, seven months down the road, will say, I never heard about this. I didn't know this was going on. Is there a plan to bring the rest of the cadre of this stuff?
There is, in fact. Go ahead and talk about what that would look like.
So part of that is the strategy that I mentioned in the next three months, where we will talk to people who actually have been following through with this, and then we will talk to new people who had no idea, and people who may or may not have engaged throughout. I think the other piece is that some of these metrics require us to go back and ask the community continuously, how are we doing? And I think that's sort of how we captured. We did limit the responses for this survey, I think, to middle and high school students. And you know, I'm a huge proponent of maybe starting and creating surveys that students starting in third grade can actually respond to and give us feedback on, and I think that's part of our work.
I would suggest that if you think about the constituencies that you particularly represent, and when they are involved and engaged in moving this process forward, having your presence and support and engagement with those active communities, it goes a long way to making a strategic plan something that does more than sit on a shelf. So I just use this opportunity to encourage you to actively, physically participate in that process. Thank you.
Appreciate this.
Any other questions or comments about the initial formulation of the plan?
Appreciate those comments, and in fact, if it's only middle and high school students, so that's almost half, so...
Middle and high.
Yeah, I mean, so about 12,000 elementary, so 16 little s in half, that's a decent response. Any other questions on that first part?
Anybody else? Then let's take a look at the next section, which really gets to the first priority, student learning and achievement. And there are two goals that go with this. Let's look at goal one, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Battle Lockhart.
I'm excited to hear about the embedded versus the just professional development. I agree that there's a difference, and I think as much as you spoke about creating the learning experience, that creates an experience for the teachers so it can trickle down to the students. So I'm excited to see the outcome of that in the future, for sure. A great presentation overall, and... That's okay. Yep.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
I'm happy to see us moving from professional development into professional learning environment. I think the teachers will be happy with that, too, because over years, I've heard teachers complaining about professional development and not meeting their needs, or it's hard to get it for everyone, but I think with the professional learning, it's going to reach everyone, something for everyone. And I'm glad to see that you're differentiated, getting back to that so that we're meeting the needs of all the kids.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm curious to know, this is a million-dollar question, Dr. Navarro, finding the time for the teachers to have this professional learning environment, because so often, they're running from one task to another. Okay, at four o'clock, we're in a new professional development, you know, to give them the space and the time and not to have any distractors is going to be a challenge, but obviously, it's well worth it. But I know time management in the building is a huge challenge.
Yeah, and I think part of the discussion is maximizing existing time, and then, you know, the word investment is not there for a reason. And so we're going to have to have conversations about the investment of our resources in supporting professional learning. And it's not always just going to be as simple as, let's just invest more. The question is where, how... The question is where, how, what flexibilities? And I think, and I think teachers need to be part of the conversation when we do that because it just can't feel done onto teachers. It needs to be work that we do collectively.
Sure.
So going to the other challenging issues, recruit and retention. As you know, the pipeline for teachers is very, very challenging. Though I applaud you to have a targeted approach, the challenge still remains that we have a pipeline challenge that is out of our control. And I like the goal, but I think some of it may not be within our ability unless we elevate it at the state level legislatively. But the pipeline issue has been going on for quite some time. And COVID is going to have a huge, huge impact. It's my point, we're competing with other school districts from the same well. And if there's no water being added to the well, then it's going to be increasingly. And I'm an optimist. I mean, I applaud the goal, but I'm just saying. And then from a retention perspective, we're going to need to have a broader discussion with other elected officials such as affordable housing for our teachers. To retain our teachers or affordable work, work, you know, homes to start. So I think it's rightful to have that goal. I just think we need to be realistic and open up the discussions for other stakeholders that will affect that outcome.
Agreed. And I think the other piece is that we need to find some flexibility and creativity in how we do the grow-your-own programs and as well as doing the recruitments. So absolutely.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you for the presentation. I was really pleased to see that culture and climate is a part of our priorities and your priorities. I've spoken to lots of students over the course of this year. And it cannot be emphasized enough how, how students feel in the classroom is almost just as important as what they're learning or the teachers that they have. Because if we don't have that environment that is conducive to learning, you could have the best teacher in the world and it will not get through to them. The only concern I have is from a high-level perspective, focusing on student learning and achievement is an admirable cause. I'm a little concerned about implementation because as we know, when we start talking about student achievement, usually how that trickles down for teachers is get those test scores up. And I just hope that in implementing this plan, we don't put an emphasis on teaching to a test. Our classrooms should always be focused on the content and the tests should just be an indicator of that. And I hope that we don't shift our focus from that because of this goal.
Ms. McGraw? Ms. Battle Lockhart.
Thank you. What I would share with my fellow board members, I see this as a vision, right? For what we would like to be and where we're heading. And it's, and the mission is finding those small pieces to help us get there. So I just want us to make sure that we are looking at this with a different set of lenses. Yes, that's a, it's a huge task to take on. And yes, we have challenges, but we have to start somewhere. So that's the purpose of the mission, is to identify those key priority areas that we can focus on and start shifting accordingly to ensure that we get that work towards the result. Because if we keep leaning on where we're being, where we're being. And I'm excited at seeing something different. You know, we have to do things differently and we're going to have to be creative of how we do that. And if, these are some things that have been asked for, i.e. as Ms. Brown stated, learning differently. If teachers are saying they want to learn differently and receive differently, when they start at least getting that, it moves differently. So no matter how many we have, we still have to do the work, right? So that's kind of how I see this. So I just wanted to share because I don't want you to feel like you put the work in and oh, it's not going to. It can happen. We've just got to be willing to do the work that's required to get it done. And our kids deserve that. And our teachers do as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Battle Lockhart. Well said. Ms. McGraw?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, first of all, I'm really thrilled to see a strategic plan being put into place. I really think we've needed an organized, systematic approach to ensure our students are making progress and that they're achieving. And an approach where there is consistent accountability. Because I think when we held ourselves, hold ourselves accountable, then we continue to make growth, no matter what the area is. I'm curious, I'm going to go back to the time allotments. Just in a broad sense, I just wanted to, was wondering what, what are you thinking in terms of time allotments for developing this professional learning? Professional learning. Are we looking at restructuring the school year, restructuring the calendar, the school day? Just in a broad sense, what are your thoughts right now?
So we're looking at all of them right now. We are in the stages of, you know, when you take people aside for two days and you let them think through this, a whole bunch of ideas come up. And then we're like, hold on, we still have to make sure that people agree with us. And we haven't like, you know, gone out there to create like a cat and come back with like a peacock or something. So we're thinking about it all, to be honest. I mean, I told, I've been telling my team 50 times over, as, as you think about it, we may have to come back to this board as I am learning Charles County and ask for a relook of next year's calendar. And you know, the board approved two years' worth of a calendar. But we may want to relook at that. We need to look at our, our funding to see what flexibilities we have. We are going to go aggressively after the Maryland Leeds Grant because we want to bring in funding that allows some flexibilities for this, for starting this professional learning. So part of our work is to come back with, if this makes sense to this board from, you know, a high-level systemic view of how you want metrics to come up and sort of signal to you is the system moving progressively in the right direction, as you said, making progress, then we begin to work and create the whole infrastructure of what that means. And, and we begin to come back to you and say, here's what we view for professional learning three to five years out. Here's where we're going to start. This is what people are going to experience. We're going to ask them, you know, this is what you're supposed to be experiencing. Are you experiencing this or are you just nicely filling out, oh, that was a great presentation by Maria? Right? Like, so that's the sequencing that we have. But you just pointed out, we have it all in our heads to figure out. If this makes sense to the board, that's how we then begin to, to start all the intricate work that goes behind that.
Because I think it can't be one and done, obviously. And I think it's really important, too, that as part of the transparency, we, the board has, has consistent presentations as to the progress of the plan. I think that should be built in, you know, as well.
If I, if I could, you know, in our, in our group, looking at the blueprint, I mean, we, we heard clearly that teachers want the professional development. It's just a matter of figuring out, you know, how you do that with, with limited resources, time being one of those. So, you know, I like the fact that you're looking at all alternatives. Because teachers want it, but it's, understand it's a difficult thing to fit in. Any other questions on priority one, goal one? Okay.
So if we move forward, we haven't spoken specifically about the two goals under equity and access? If there were any specific questions about that area?
So, well, let me come back. I thought you were going through just one goal at a time. So I'd like to go, I'd like to go to goal two of priority one.
Very good, certainly.
Please, yeah, okay. So the question I had there, and again, I like it a lot. And you emphasized it, Dr. Navarro, when you went through the presentation, in that it's support for kids that not only below, but above their grade level expectation. And so I know in the past, we've had kids, it's primarily at high school, that want to take a class. But the class is technically offered at the school, but there aren't enough kids, you know, showing an interest in that class to take it at this school. So, you know, not trying to drill down into the weeds now because this is, you know, just the framework for the plan. But I think that's something that's very important to, to iron out. And particularly in some of the things that you mentioned and we talked about it as a board, to increase virtual opportunities, you know, having classes that any kid at any school could take. And it may not be during the regular school day, but again, you've alluded that, that that's something that we can look at differently as well. But I think that's very important for kids that have an interest in the topic, but maybe it's not offered at their school.
Yes, and I would say that that's probably tied to priority, to the priority two that talks about that flexible scheduling to expand. But absolutely came loud and clear, especially with students and parent surveys saying they want more flexibility and course options. A lot of the things that were emphasized in priority two actually came from the parent and student survey results.
Okay. Thank you. You had a question? You're good. Ms. McGraw?
Along these same lines, I heard you say that you wanted programs to be more inclusive. So as part of this plan, will there be an evaluation of, and I'm speaking specifically special education, of the offerings that we have in special education to make them more inclusive?
So the way I've been thinking around the inclusive components, and I highlighted the inclusive components in early childhood programs so that we, we do learning together programs. But I think in the other ones, part of what we want to be able to present the data as we move into program options and opportunities is also representation of student demographics. You have heard me say a lot, as I talked about access and opportunity, that one of the, one of the indicators that I look at is representation of students with disabilities, just like I look at low-income students. Those are clear indicators that as an institution, if we have a solid representation of our student body in those, from those two demographic groups, we probably have a really solid program in terms of accessibility. So I think we would look at it from, from that vantage point.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Wilson?
I would just like to hear your thoughts, Dr. Navarro. On one of the slides, I think it's under goal two, when you talk about the number of courses offered. Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't we like to see? Obviously, we like to have a variety of courses, but with a focus on academic rigor. Because I can have, and I apologize for not knowing the correct, the name of the course. We could have elementary algebra one and elementary algebra two, and then algebra one and algebra two. And we could have a whole bunch of kids at the lower-level math. So how do you plan to push, encourage, support that? Especially among minority African-American males, there's a tendency not to take more rigorous courses. And though I absolutely promote having choices, I also want to promote rigor.
Yeah. Great question. So a couple of things. The metrics for middle school is in terms of the number of courses offered. The state delineates certain courses that are high school credit for, that can be taken in middle school. And we haven't actualized all those opportunities as it is. So the first step is to make those credits be available in middle school. Those go into the mathematics, go into the world language, go into some CTE pathways that allow students to sort of follow what I would say are rigorous pathways. The discussion around how do we get more students to get into rigorous coursework starts very early with talking around, talking about making sure that every student has access to the core curriculum. That's why that's goal number one. If you're in a classroom where you don't get access to the core curriculum that you will see in an assessment that you will take to measure how well you're doing, then you're not getting access and opportunity. And so the core curriculum in its scope and sequence, in the way that it's sequenced out, is a rigorous curriculum. When you get into middle school, you begin to go through a process of sort of figuring out your interests and your aptitudes, if you will, in certain areas. We need to continuously be looking at our conscious and unconscious bias about how we think about students and who has aptitude in certain areas and who doesn't. Like I said to you earlier in a board meeting, I think we got a lot more kids in Charles County that couldn't be taking algebra one by eighth grade, a lot more. So aptitude is absolutely there. And it's our responsibility to think about the trajectories that get more kids to be able to get into those rigorous class coursework. And part of that discussion, focusing and investing in professional learning is to, all of us as educators in the school system, be very clear on what we're going to do to make that happen. So the metrics for middle school is metrics of courses that are going to be, and you know, part of this is also following the sequence that gets you to a high school diploma. And so that is accessing those coursework, that coursework sanctioned by MSD that gets you closer to getting your high school diploma. And those are chips of importance. And we, and if we can give those to students earlier in middle school and they're ready for it and they succeed in it, it just opens up their high school to do a whole bunch of other things. You know, go to CSM all day and take college courses on our dime. That's great. That's great for students. And, or take AP classes or take more of a CTE pathway that tells you how to do welding and, and start a salary that is higher than the salary I started with when I started teaching. So it's just, it's just the opportunity. Sorry. Little bit of a soapbox. I'm sorry, Jeff.
That's why we're talking strategy.
Right.
Any questions? Okay.
We're going to be out of time. A little bit out of time. Oh, probably, I think we probably have another, maybe five to 10 more minutes.
Sure, we can, let's, let's go to the, to priority two, goal one. I think that's the next one, right? So.
We've had a few comments on access and equity already.
And I, I have a question, and I think we've already answered this in a board meeting. So we, we are prepared, based on what, what Curran says, who is afforded a full-day kindergarten opportunity. We are prepared with the spaces that we currently have in our brick-and-mortar schools to do this. Is that correct?
We are prepared for next year.
Okay.
And we need to continue to prepare because it's growing, it's growing. And we need to really do some work. And I'm, Beth in our, in Kevin's department in early childhood is doing a great, great work by bringing the community partners in. I don't think we've ever engaged them to where we're saying, hey, the, the state will support you, supporting more pre-K seats. What do you need? How can we help? And I think our posture in that is we don't have to do anything. We should be helping. And we should be helping also not just the organized centers that can care for our four-year-olds, but we should also be helping students that are going to be in informal care. And that informal care, the grandparent, the lady that has always done it in the neighborhood, I think there's a lot of work that we can do that, that reaps the benefits three years later, two years later, a year later, when those kids come to us, because those are our students in the waiting. And so I think there's a lot of community engagement, not just in pre-K necessarily with the organized. with the organized centers, but the informal ones, if we can gain their trust, because we don't regulate them, and we can do professional learnings together to, and with the library system, we have a fabulous person that's leading our county public libraries, and his interest to connect and go to informal care places is just a great and smart investment in the students that we will eventually get.
Okay. Thank you. So, I think, you know, as you, as you put together, this is, this is, you call it a plan, good enough name, but, but when you get down on the nuts and bolts and put a resource plan together, I think, you know, identifying the resources in, in dollars and, and anything else, like new buildings, like to do this in five years, you know, how much more space would we need, I think is very beneficial. Because you've always talked about, you know, to our resource sponsors, which are the county commissioners, you know, to give them a five-year, you know, we used to call it a fit-up five-year developmental plan in the Navy, and what do you, what do you need down the road? And certainly, this is, this is huge. This is, to give pre-K to everybody who qualifies for it under Kerwin is, is a big deal, not just for us, but for every school system. So, I guess putting, what I'm asking, putting those, when you put the plan together, the dollar amounts for each of the goals, and the time to execute them would be a good thing.
Okay.
Any other questions on that goal? On the next goal? Yeah? Ms. Battle Lockhart, yeah?
So, I've been in quite a few meetings with Blueprint CTE Policy Number Three, so the one thing that I want to offer as well, I've shared this in one of the meetings, but as we talk about student learning and achievement, one of the things that we did at Job Corps is collaborate academics and trade, because teaching is different. Kids learn differently from every teacher. And what we would do as a hospitality trade or culinary trade, we would take all the mathematics parts out of the trade and share it with the mathematic teachers, so they can better understand the math piece of the trade. So, I would love to see some collaboration between the trades and academics to ensure that we are really striving for some great results academically and on the trade side. The other thing that I've been working in my other role, talking to Dr. Navarro about, is from the CTE perspective from industries. I think what a great thing that a lot of school systems should do, which is what we're doing at the Restaurant Association, is partnering with people that are offering our trades, so we can advocate for the things and support you all in having stronger programs. So, I just think that needs to happen with every trade that we offer, those industry leaders, and those, especially the associations, because they're advocating for funding as well. And if funding becomes a challenge in one area at the, in the school system, if that trade is specifically something that you're offering, that association can support in offering scholarships to those students. So, I just think this is an opportunity for school systems to really think outside of the box and don't feel like they have to do it alone. I just don't think they bring the industries in enough to find out what their needs are and find out that the industry can support the CTE program. So, I just wanted to share that piece, because it's very key right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Just a little bit of a piggyback to Mrs. Battle Lockhart. I had wrote a note of the matrix for CTE. I think we need to definitely build those relationships with, with the consumer, to make sure that we are meeting their needs. And then the other aspect, which is always challenging, is selling it to the parents, that CTE is a pathway to a great career. And so, it's gonna take a partnership with parents to say, you know, electrician, plumber, you know, those guys make pretty good money and can raise a family. But we've had some discussions with the Chamber of Commerce locally in, in helping offset certification costs for our younger folks. It's all part of the overall package, but I would offer to you maybe a few more matrix for CTE that are measurable.
Okay.
Because they, you know, they get kind of complicated.
Got it.
Ms. Brown?
I just want to say, I'm glad to see this word "staff" included in here, because many times, teachers feel like everything is being just handed down to them, and they don't have any, any input in it, but I'm glad to see that they do have a part in this, because they're the ones with the kids all day.
Thank you. Ms. Battle Lockhart?
And I just wanted to add, when she said that, made me think of something else. The other piece as well, when you do these partnerships with industry leaders or associations, what we're doing is, speaking of embedded professional learning, is we are participating and making sure that we're offering, because not every teacher is teaching an industry that they're familiar with. So, that's something else that can really support you in that embedded professional learning, is from the CTE side, is to really involve the industry leaders in supporting the teachers in the training to get the engagement from the students, or the parents, or both, so they can better understand the value and the benefit of those things.
Ms. Battle Lockhart, I think the associations serve for the school system three opportunities. There is the link to scholarships for students, so that they can further their, their trade and their skill beyond high school. As you mentioned, professional learning, that many times, we don't have all the expertise, because we don't do all these different jobs, we're educators. And then the third one, which we are going to continue to talk about, is that we, our core work is classrooms, teaching and learning, but we have an IT department. We feed kids, so we run food and nutrition, we run transportation, so there is, you know, we have, we hire electricians, and we hire a whole bunch of people. So, I think the associations also create for us a way to think about us being an employer, potentially of our own students and graduates eventually, and so I think we can look at those three ways of why the partnership with associations, as we've started to talk about, can really benefit the school system and the students long-term. So, good point.
Yes, from the student.
With regard to the bottom of the list, you mentioned talking about leveling the planning field for students through high school scheduling. I would suggest that we adjust the inequity between the lock scheduling and period scheduling in the high schools. Students at schools like McDonough, Westlake, and La, end up taking four less classes than students at North Point in St. Charles. This limits students' opportunity to take art classes, AP classes, and join CTE programs. This creates a school system where some students get to take more classes because of where they live.
Absolutely. This came up in our discussion too, and so, this is one of those things that we're gonna need to be discussing.
Thanks.
Point.
All right, um.
Should we move on to?
To the metrics? Yeah.
Or, well, we talked a little bit about the metrics, should we move on to the next goal?
I think the next goal.
Goal, yeah, please. So, priority three, goal one.
I know Mr. Hurd gave some feedback earlier.
Yeah.
On this goal.
I think it's, it's fairly self-explanatory. All right, if. So, the bullets were perfect for that one.
I'll take, I'll take it.
Yeah. Okay. So.
I just wanted to know if there was any additional feedback into anything that's coming up next, and get an overview of the board's sentiment on the strategic plan.
I'll just say, you know, I think it's, when I read through it, it was, it was to the point, and it had not too much detail, but enough detail, so that it was something that you could say, yeah, that's, that's definitely worth doing, and I understand what you're trying to achieve. So, I thought the overall plan was, was put together very well, and I've got no issue personally with, with everything, anything that's on that screen right now. Ms. Wilson?
I, I think it's a great, great plan, just, you know, there's always tweaking. The one thing, the last thing that I would add is talking a little more about the parent and guardian component, because the parent and the guardian needs to understand, and more importantly, they're gonna ask, how can we help? And so, we need to make sure that we, we're always talking about parental engagement. This is a great strategy, and I think that needs to be a very important component that's at least heavily considered.
Thank you.
Ms. Battle Lockhart?
And I'll piggyback on Ms. Wilson, just from my experience, you've seen my emails lately. That's so key, the communicating with the parents, there's been, you know, there are some times, especially now more than ever, because of the shortages in every area. This is an opportunity to hold a parent accountable to support their student. When the teacher's not gonna be in the classroom, we gotta think outside of the box. So, I'll just share my example, that my real-life example, just people understand, is my daughter's math teacher is out having her baby, there's nothing wrong with that, life happens, and she's had multiple substitutes, and she's like, not really happy, and then her assignments are missing, and some things like that. So, I offered a, a suggestion as a parent, is if that situation happens, go back to the packet process and give us the packets, and we can find a tutor to support our kids for those parents that do that type of thing, instead of just letting them kind of flow, however you guys can figure out the work. That's where you need to pull us in a little bit more, because we don't reach out as much as we should as parents, I know I do, I'm just saying in general, parents. But we should pull in more when we, to know, or just make that announcement, that this teacher is going out for this amount of time, we're gonna see some little ups and downs. However, this is gonna be the work that's gonna be required in this time, and can you help us support your, your child? So, those types of things of keeping us in the loop, that we can support you in maintaining that learning versus having learning loss during that time, because, don't get me wrong, she loves her teacher, because this has been a great year for math, y'all, but when you get, you don't always get a great teacher, again, in the midst of them being absent. So, that's so important, what Ms. Wilson said, and I totally agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Very good. Dr. Nelson, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. So, I will take your feedback, and just know that this document will be tweaked based on the notes that we collected. Thank you so much. So, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Sure. So.
And, um.
Mr. Schwartz, I think it's coming up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good night, Mr. Schwartz.
We have several policies, policy series to present as an information item tonight. The first are the 2,000 and 7,000 series policies. These were worked on by a committee of board members, to include Mr. Lucas and Ms. Battle Lockhart. And again, this is being presented tonight as an information item. After tonight, it will come back as a report item at the March Board meeting, for action item at the April Board meeting. Opening up for any questions. We're not gonna necessarily go one by one. If you have any questions about any of the policies, we can certainly discuss them.
Yeah. So, yeah, and just, I hope everyone had a chance to look through them. It's in the standard format where, you know, words are marked out and new language is inserted. So, Mr., or Ms. McGraw, you had a question?
Yes, I do. I just don't understand the language. On Policy 7211, the very first page there, just explain to me what it means. The need for construction will be demonstrated by projected population growth, and are schools that provide the educational integrity to deliver instruction, and any other justification? What does that mean?
So. Good, sure, let me. Sorry, I had the 2,000 pulled up first. Let me just read this again.
Oops, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. Yeah, no, that's, that's okay.
I'm so sorry.
So, the first part of that, you know, we, the words "be demonstrated," obviously, we have new construction based on population growth, and increased growth in the, in the school population. And so, I assume then it's the part about that provide educational integrity to deliver instruction and/or any other justification is determined by the board? That's the part that you'd like some explanation on?
Yeah. I don't understand what they mean.
So, the policy deals with, with new construction, and so, depending on what programs are offered at that school, we'd like to make sure that the school has the facilities, and so, and I'll admit, the instructional integrity was my, my language, or the educational integrity, to make sure that, that we are building schools that have the physical capability to deliver courses. So, say we'd like to build another school that is focused on CTE, or schools that are focused on, on programs that we'd like to introduce into the school system. So, we can get into the weeds later, but that's, that's the answer to your question.
I don't need to get into the weeds.
Okay. Okay, again, it's presented, presented.
I didn't understand what it meant.
Presented as an information item, okay. But Ms. Abel?
I had a question on 10,700. I don't have the exact one pulled up in front of me, but it's in regards to the requisite of having bond at 50,000, and it was raised to 100,000.
That's a Mr. Hahn question.
Seventy-four, ten.
Yeah. So, while he gets up, we, the policy hadn't been looked at for years, and so I brought up the question if that, if that number needed to be changed, because the policy hadn't been looked at for quite some time.
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Lucas's statement, just updating a policy that has not been looked at, and, you know, with increases in cost of construction and other issues related to construction, this is what would make it increase that.
Okay. That's all I needed. The reasoning behind it, I didn't know if it was a state mandate, numbers, or what was the reasoning behind it. And now, we're reviewing all policies, even the single ones, or we're just doing 2,000 and 7,000?
I was, I was just beginning with 2,000 and 7,000.
Just the 2,000, that's, those, the next ones are the next agenda items, yeah. So, any other general questions, and then we'll look at these in more detail at the board meeting? Okay?
The next two policies are 5116.5 and 5117. These two policies are mandated by state law and NSDE. We're required to have these policies in place. The policies are very basic, outlining what the board's position is on bullying harassment, and for 5117, 5116.5 is a new policy on parenting and pregnant students. The details of what, how we handle those issues are handled in Super Tennis Rules, but the policy language is the minimum policy language that NSDE is looking for. And then these are information items for tonight.
Any questions on either of those policies that Mr. Schwartz just mentioned? All right. Very good.
The next policy is policy 9123. This again is also an information item. This policy deals with the student board member. As you know, our student board member now has voting rights, which is new for us this past year. There are certain things that were not explicitly explained and covered in the state law that the board's policy would then explain, particularly when the election for the board member, student board member is held, which is addressed in the first paragraph. It will be held in the spring, in the second semester of the school year. The policy also would address the role of the alternate board member, which again is not explained in law. Importantly, the policy would address when the student's board member, a student board member's term starts. That's not outlined in law, but we're suggesting in policy to begin that on July 1st of each year. And what that would mean is the student board member would serve for one calendar year or one full calendar year until June 30th the following year, which would result, if there's a senior in that position, as say Mr. Hurd is this year, that he would continue serving even after his graduation until June 30th of that year. That would complete his one-year term. That would be set out in the state, in the policy. The other thing that's set out in policy that's not addressed in law is the last sentence of the third paragraph, which explains that the student's ability to serve shall not be subject to the student's eligibility to participate in extracurricular activities. State law implies that the student board member is not subject to the eligibility policy. This expressly states that, so it's clear that there's no issue concerning eligibility. The other parts of the policy, we state what state law explains. This is again as an information item. We'll come back for adoption at the April board meeting.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
And the last policy this evening is policy 6330, which is coming as a report item this evening. It was provided as an information item at the last board meeting. This policy deals with the calendar that's established by the board each year and which parts of the calendar are board-controlled and which parts the board is assigning to the superintendent to control. Again, this is a policy that was presented as an information item at the last board meeting and is coming back as a report item for this discussion this evening. It will come forward as an action item at the next board meeting.
Ms. Abel?
I expressed concern the last time this was brought before us in regards to the employee workdays and the board not being responsible for the employee workdays. See, it's still under the superintendent, so I think as a report item, we need to decide whether we're going to leave it there before it comes for a vote.
No. Understood. So this is, this is just a starting point so that we can have discussion.
I'll explain that the, the number of employee workdays is established through the negotiated agreements, but which days they work are controlled, would be controlled under this policy by the superintendent. That's what's being proposed.
Any other questions? Sorry. Mr. Hurd?
So I'll just reiterate, I believe I had concerns last meeting too regarding delegating the ability to the superintendent to be able to amend the start and end of marking periods. I still believe that, you know, the magnitude of that decision still belongs with the board. And I believe I questioned it last time if that had, if this was changing practice. And I believe it was because we have voted on the change in marking period just this year.
So, I understand your position on that. Again, this is, if there's, you know, the board member that wants to discuss, but we'll discuss it more at the next board meeting.
Actually, this is a report.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is reported on tonight, yes.
So, the hope, the hope is to get this policy in final position to be adopted at the next board meeting. So if there's any changes, that this would be the appropriate time.
Okay. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Personally, I don't have a problem with the language. I, I think the start date and the final date regarding, unless inclement weather changes that, I think is what we as a board should focus on in holidays. When it gets down to marking periods and half-days and workdays, personally, I see that as day-to-day operations where superintendent should have authority to do that, in my personal opinion. So I personally have no problem with the language as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock? Ms. McGraw?
Regarding the start and end of the marking period, I do believe that it should be left in the hands of the superintendent. Because I do believe as well as a day-to-day operation, I question whether or not, we, we did vote on that. I remember that. But I thought that was because of the unusual circumstances of the pandemic. It wasn't a normal day, a normal circumstance. So I, I wouldn't want to change that because there's so many factors that enter into that.
And actually, it really wasn't a change in policy because the policy didn't exist. So this, this seeks to codify what the policy will be going forward.
Okay.
Ms. Brown, then Mr. Hurd?
I also don't have, I don't have any problems with what's here. I do see the marking periods come, falling under the superintendent. I think what happened with us before was extenuating circumstances. And I think it should be under the superintendent's, pretty.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Hurd?
The other points that, you know, my fellow board members have made are duly noted and I definitely agree with the sentiment. My only discomfort was just with the amendments to those calendars midway through the year, like we have seen. And I think that is, you know, of the greatest magnitude in terms of affecting our students. But I see the point about, you know, this is a pandemic and obviously my service for the vast majority has been during a pandemic. So, you know, I'm smart enough to know when I don't know something. So I will defer to the judgment of board members who have been on this board longer than me on this issue.
Uh, Ms. Abel?
If I'm the only one with an issue about the employees, then I'm fine with it. And for the record, define normal, please.
That is a point well taken. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So we'll look for this.
This will be brought back at the March board meeting for final adoption. Thank you.
Before Dr. Navarro gets up, we're going to take a five-minute break.
And then December came and it threw us for a loop. So for a period of time, while I had started talking about reopening schools, I had to push back a little bit and shut down again. But as soon as we saw a potential for the numbers to clear, we began to reinstate a whole bunch of things that allowed our community to come back into schools. And of course, they have also learned and given us some feedback about how they also want to participate. So we reinstated the, we were back to spectator access at the beginning of February. We started our concession sales at school events. Thank you, St. Charles, for the chicken buffalo sandwiches last Wednesday night that I had at the basketball finals. We started field trips. And I think you heard from a parent tonight about a kindergarten not having any field trips. That is important. We need to bring those back. And hopefully in the springtime, our students and our families experience us getting back out to field trips because they're an important part of the, of the learning. We talked about athletes and students participating in extracurricular activities no longer required to test weekly. So again, we have instituted a lot of structures for the past two years to try to keep our kids safe and specifically this year to return to in-person. And so we've been taking those away as time has watched. And we've been closely watching what has happened at the state level in terms of mandates and obviously as we also on Friday in Annapolis and later on with the new CDC guidance. You saw that a couple of weeks ago, I sent this out to our families to say, hey, let's start getting ready. Because it's not a question of if, it's a question of when we go to mask optional. We need to start putting some things in place. And back then, you see that we also said, you know, at some point, and we changed it, but the original one said, no, don't forget, the federal government still require masking in buses. And that's no longer the case, right? We, we learned that on Friday. So what we did is we also changed our standard operating procedures, which has been the document that guides how we do a lot of things in school. So if you're sending a kid sick or if a kid becomes sick, there's a lot of staff things that happen in this past year and two about how to report it, when kids come back, when they don't come back. And as you're aware, we had multiple versions of this. So as the goalposts were changing, we were also evolving this SOP document out to the community, giving new guidelines because we needed to let nurses know what to do, administrators, teachers know what to do. So this is our last version, hopefully. And that is an endemic SOP rather than a pandemic SOP that really discusses what the school system will do. And it's important because as we talked about and as we heard earlier from our community members who came to speak about, about masks in schools, the CDC's transition and the way they are moving away from looking at numbers in terms of people that get COVID in a particular jurisdiction to moving more towards indicators in terms of the hospitalization and sort of severe cases that require people to be hospitalized has changed the playing field of how we look at the data. So as a result of it, we went from a CDC measure that had a lot of jurisdictions sort of in the red, meaning that they were not sort of ready because there was a lot of people that had COVID in a specific area or had the possibility of getting COVID to a lot of the country looking at really being in low and medium risks. And right now, as you heard earlier today, Charles County is in the low, in the low levels in terms of community levels per the CDC. Actually, most of Maryland, there's only a couple of small jurisdictions. And so that has changed the way we look at the data. So when masks become optional in CCPS, it was important, and we are in a process where we met with principals last week. Mr. Stoddard had a meeting so that principals understood our standard operating, our SOP, and knew exactly what to do when the board took action. They are by, in terms of, you know, they asked questions, they gave feedback. When we came and changed the SOP, we brought in our head of nurses. The health department was, was part of this discussion. We brought in our unions so that staff understood what the changes would be. And we brought in a slew of staff to help us sort of condense a 40, 50-page document down to a 10-page document that really sort of talked about what that looks like. Also, our communication then has gone from having the principals understand this document and how to operate schools to now this week, principals are having meetings with all of their staff members so they can go through the SOP with all of their staff members so that the nurse knows what the new procedure is, so the third grade teacher knows, so the IA knows in terms of what happens if a kid comes in sick? What if they have these symptoms? What if they don't? Right? And so what are they supposed to do now? And the important thing is that as masks become optional in our schools, the school system is no longer going to be doing contact tracing. Okay? And so that's a big shift for the school system for what people have spent hours and hours doing, contacting families and so forth. And so we want this week to spend the time making sure staff understand that. And we also have some documents that will explain in simple language to families, what does that mean? Before, if my kid had a temperature, do I keep him at home? Do I, what does it mean if a kid in my child's classroom has COVID? Am I going to be notified? Am I not going to be notified? So we address all those pieces because those are the things that parents want to know. So besides having masks optional in schools, what families want to know is what are your procedures moving forward as a result of it? What are you going to tell me? What are you not going to tell me? What do I have to report to? Do I report to the nurse or do I tell the health department? So some things will change. So as masks are optional in schools and on buses, because that was the additional, the additional guidance that came later with the CDC changing its protocols. No staff or students will be required to wear masks in schools. CCPS is no longer going to be collecting reports regarding COVID positive cases or require any mandates for quarantining or isolation. So all those intricacies, we need to make sure that families and staff understand. We will relay to the state health department any, any responsibility or any contact tracing that they're going to have to do. We will still continue to communicate and talk to the health department, but they will do the contact tracing and notify us. And then you see the other ones, mandatory COVID screenings for extracurricular activities are no longer required. And then you see some, some questions about facilities and water fountains. Some things will stay the same. So one of the things that we always say to families and we will continue to say to families, please, if your child is sick, keep them home. We will continue until honestly, the state funding runs out, I think. The voluntary COVID-19 screenings that we made available for staff and students, so that will continue. We will continue to have hand sanitizers available at schools. And, and then we will make sure that if there is a student that is missing class because of a COVID positive case or needs some flexibility, that we continue the continuity of learning plans that schools develop, the plans that they figured out how to contact a student and check in with a student to make sure they can continue accessing the, the stuff they missed and that they have some teacher to talk through throughout the day for their assignment. So that part works, continues, sorry. So with that said, I, I think there's, as I mentioned to you, there is additional communications that are running this week that were always sort of scheduled to run through this week in terms of informing families and staff about when the, when masks come off or become optional. What does it mean for the procedural things that you need to do in schools and the things that you need to know as a parent? As such, as you know, right now, the board can make a decision to not require masks in schools, starting as early as today, as tomorrow. My recommendation is that we continue the trajectory of informing staff and families and answering their questions. Anytime we inform families and parents, we always get questions back and that we're able to answer the questions and that we move to mask optional both in schools and buses, starting on March 7th. So with that, I'll take any questions or anything that you have for us.
I just have a comment before questions. And just to reiterate, that your, your whole process for meeting with stakeholders and developing SOPs for a mask optional school system, all of that started well before the state board of education took their vote this week. Is that correct?
Yeah. I think we have, we have been preparing and we have been watching sort of those metrics. I think in, in probably in early and mid-January, when we started watching sort of the, the curve begin to go downwards. And we had the information that we had about the, the last variant. We began to organize to talk about, okay, what, what are we going to do and not do once masks come off? And we knew that governing bodies were going to start having those discussions eventually and we just needed to get on and figure out what that would look like.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Abel?
I'd like to make a motion that we move to mask optional according to the superintendent's guidelines effective immediately.
Second that.
Motion by Ms. Abel, seconded by Mr. Hancock. Is there any discussion? Ms. Battle Lockhart?
Sorry. I just needed some, I just want some clarity on, for the public. In your first slide, it says volunteers are welcome back. I just want that to be clarified, that volunteers are welcome back under the previous safety measures that they are required to, that were required, required to do before. Nothing to have to do with COVID, but I just want to put that out there.
Correct.
Because you just don't go knocking the door and say. Because you just don't go knocking the door and say, you can be here. You know, I just want to be clear, because there's some-
We just have to follow the process, the procedures that we followed in, in previous years regarding, regarding volunteers. And by the way, anybody walking into our buildings-
No, I didn't mean-
-will have the, the mask optional.
I just want to put that out there.
Absolutely. And we've been trying to, honestly, we've been trying to get volun-, schools want volunteers back, they want parents back. Sometimes, parents have said, we like to do our PTO, or we like to do the, this parent meeting in the evenings via WebEx. But a lot of our parents really do want to come in, or the people that come in and read to kids, and volunteer, and, and we need them, so.
And I love that, that they do, and we want them to do it more. I just wanted to make sure that we put that, because we're COVID-focused right now, but they still going to have to go through that background piece-
Yes.
-that requires them to come to the school. In the other part of this, I just want to, for the sake of the change, I support op-, you know, I'm all about choice. So I have no problems with what your decision is, and I support the optional, but I want to make something very clear to parents. When these things change, the responsibility falls in their hands. I know they, you know, they want their kids to be uncovered, their kids to be uncovered, but you still have to follow safety measures to make sure that we're not spreading germs, period, any kind of germs. So I just, that's my only concern, because we get so laxed, because we don't have to do what we've been doing for the last two years anymore, and we still, we need to make sure our kids are aware that they still have to be, wash their hands when they come out of the bath, those types of things. So we can be, stay in school and never have to come back out ever again. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I think I have one other. No, you said it. Stay home if you're sick, please. Just want to say that.
Mr. Hancock, and then Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. So just so that everyone is, is clear on the motion that Mrs. Abel made, and the one that I seconded, the biggest difference between what we're proposing versus the superintendent is the word "immediately." And, and I support that 100%. I feel, you know, we've, the citizens of our county have known for a week that tomorrow's March 1st. If we don't implement this right now, it's going to be total chaos tomorrow, in my opinion. And we're going to open up a huge can of worms. I do understand it could take a week to implement the new SOP. So in my, in my thought process, the only thing we would change tomorrow is making the mask optional, and then allow a week for, to transition that SOP into what is being proposed. I don't think anyone would have a problem with that. I think we're just ready. Our, our society has listened to everything that we've asked them to do for, going into year three, and things finally look good, and people just want that choice. You know, I have a small business in the town, and for the last month, masks have not been mandatory in the county, 60% of my customers still wear a mask. So it's not as if everyone's just going to stop wearing their mask tomorrow. People are just going to have a choice, and everyone should be able to respect each individual's choice, the choice between parents and teachers, and, and students, to have, to have that choice. And I, if we, if, if the numbers aren't good enough to do it now, they'll never be good enough. So I really think we need to do this, and we need to do it now. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I don't have a problem with making the masks mand-, optional. The problem I do have is in doing things in a rush manner. I know that maybe some people have already known about what's going on, and there may be some that haven't. There may be some teachers that are still thinking the kids are going to wear a mask. I think they need time to go through this, and be able to talk to classes, so that things are done smoothly. And I think that just, just doing something quickly, you got to think about the kids in school that are afraid of COVID, that are wearing masks, and those that aren't wearing masks. I think you have to talk to kids, so that they can understand that that's an option. Some kids want to wear masks, some kids don't. Some parents choose to have their kids in masks, some don't. But I think all of those things need to take time to process, to make sure that we get a smooth transition to make it optional. Like I said, I don't have a problem with making it optional. I do have a problem with, boom, now it's going to be optional the next day.
Ms. Battle Lockhart?
I remember what my other question was. You said you're making hand sanitizer available still at the schools, but will we still at least have masks in the nurse's office for those kids that we know are going to leave a mask at home? That wants to wear a mask?
Absolutely.
And to Mrs., just to piggyback off on Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, I just want to say, every parent in Charles County is wide awake right now. So they're going to have a conversation with those kids tonight. So I don't think making a decision tonight about tomorrow is going to cause a problem. So I just wanted to put that out there as well, because it's, you know, like, in the county, we optional. In the school, we're not. So it's not like they're not aware that it's happening in the community. So if we did it tomorrow, it's not like we're rushing and something's going to happen, but I'm just saying, they're watching us, so they, they're having a, the kids are watching too. So they're waiting to hear what the response is going to be, what the answer is, and I think it's time for at least us to set them free, those that want to be set free. And I just want to put it, I am not setting myself free from leaving masks, just so you know.
To your point, I also think it's important to, to acknowledge the fact that we will still have plenty of masks to provide to our teachers that wish to, to have it. CCPS still has a very strong stockpile of P, of all sorts of PPE that we will have for our teachers that would like it as well.
Ms. Wilson?
I, I will tell you something that Mr. Hancock just indicated, and I, and no pun intended. The, the horse has been let out of the barn for, for several weeks, and the inconsistency between county and some municipalities, depending on where you go in Charles County or in the state, it is, particularly in the last several weeks. I will tell you that, under normal circumstances, when the superintendent makes a recommendation, this is what, you know, what you're recommending. If I thought that there would be a loss of some sort of safety control versus administrative, I would normally support your recommendation 110%. But quite honestly, you're looking at somebody that has been on international travel, and has been back, been traveling, and we've learned quite a bit from the public, whether it's today, through our emails, or previous discussions, even, even, it, really, this has just become, this mask is, like, is indicated. It is not, we're not executing with fidelity, safety protocols. And thank God, thank God, the numbers are down, because we would really be in trouble, because we've really lost, how can I say, confidence i- in the whole protocol situation. But having said that, I think it's very important to take a moment to thank the superintendent, to thank Mr. Stoddard, and the staff. This has been one heck of a journey, in trying to safeguard, to the best of our abilities, the, the teachers, administrators, and most importantly, our students. And it has been a very trying time, but I would just say to, to superintendent and to, to the staff, you've done a marvelous job, controversial at times, absolutely challenging and overwhelming, but I think it's time that we go to mask optional. And I say that with the abundance of concern for public safety, but I think the barn has been let out of the, the horse has been let out of the barn, so.
The horse, the pony, the-
The cow, everything, everything else. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, the staff, for, because I know this is, this has been a hard, hard, and you've had to make a lot of hard decisions, and, and a lot of different guidances from federal, state, but it's, it's time to, to bring a little more normalcy.
Okay, no one else has any comments? I did a couple of things I like to say. So I just want to reiterate that the superintendent and her staff have been working this long before the state board took their vote. And, you know, many people were asking, why didn't you meet last week? Why didn't you do anything over the weekend? It's, we had a meeting today at our legislative committee from AVE, and, and they, they were commenting on how members of the ALER were monitoring the latest updates from the CDC, and, and making decisions on the fly based on that. And if that meeting had taken place on Thursday, the consensus was, they, they probably would not have gone along with what the state board said. But given those changes in the CDC, masks on the bus being one of the big ones, they made the decision that they did. And, you know, for a board to make a decision without knowing what that final decision would be, is really not. To have a meeting without knowing what you're meeting about is not the best use of time. And as it turned out, they upheld the decision. Also, just like to point out, when people talk about our, our rates in the county, and thank goodness that they are lower, but no one was talking about, you know, the people who were, who were speaking tonight, some of them, they didn't talk about the rates three months ago, when we were significantly higher than the state rates. And when the mask mandate was removed at a county level in December, and of course the holidays came, January saw the biggest increase in deaths in Charles County from COVID in two years, the biggest, the greatest number of deaths since April of 2020. And even though Omicron is not supposed to be as bad as, as the original variant of COVID. So I'd just say all that to put things in perspective, because it has been, you know, quite a ride. And I really did appreciate the comment that our first speaker tonight made. Mr. Barrett was very passionate, and the, the story he relayed in speaking to his kids, he said, you have to follow rules. And in the end, that's what we had to do. We had to follow rules. Twenty-one out of 24 counties, because they didn't meet any of the off-ramps, had kids in masks on Friday, and we were the same way. And despite what anyone thought, we could not change that. And Lord knows, if some of the other counties wanted to do it, they certainly would have done it. But it's not as though we were dragging your feet and not to speak on what the board would or would have done, or what I would or would have done. We simply have to follow rules. And now we're given an opportunity, and, you know, we will, we will take a position as board, and I do thank the superintendent for all her hard work, and Mr. Stoddard as well, done a yeoman's job. So, as I heard, we have a motion to accept the superintendent's proposal for mask optional, and a second by Mr. Hancock.
Effective immediately.
Yeah, with a minor of effective immediately.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure you phrase that correctly, as I looked at Mr. Schwartz, because I could interpret that as, yes, effective immediately, and does that satisfy the intent, Mr. Schwartz? Okay, he's nodding his head up and down, just want to make sure. And the final thing I'd like to say is that we talk a lot about our students, but let's not forget our staff, that have been and will continue to be in the schools on a daily basis. And it's, it's, it's no secret that many of them had to take a lot of leave because of, of COVID. And particularly, if they didn't have a lot of leave to take, that's kind of detrimental to them. You know, many thousands of hours. And I know there's no answer tonight, but I would just hope that there would be a mechanism that, going forward, when, when teachers and staff did the right thing, and say, hey, I tested positive, and they were sit-, and they were told, okay, you got to stay home for five days, or seven days, or whatever the number is. You know, let's hope they continue to do that, because that's what anyone should do. But I, I think we need to be as, as creative as possible in helping them, so they don't continue to, to use sickly that, that you can look and, and document and say, look, they have never done this in the past. We need to do something to make sure that we're taking care of them, because they're the ones that have been doing all the heavy lifting for the past two years. So I just want to say that. Any last nickels for anybody? All right? Thank you. All right, so there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, I'm sorry, affirmative of Ms. McGraw, Ms. Battle Lockhart, Ms. Abel, Ms. Wilson, myself, Mr. Hancock, and Mr. Hurd, all opposed. Ms. Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will send a communication to the community about the board's decision.
There you go.
Effective immediately. Thank you so much.
So nice to see everybody!
Before you get too excited.
I just want to say that I really think we live in a community that is very understanding, whether you decide tomorrow to wear your mask or not. And so I am very proud of our staff and our students, because they respect each other for whatever decision they, they try to do. And so I, I just want to say that out loud to our families that are watching, because our students are amazing, and our staffers are amazing, they're going to be respectful to each other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Don't get up yet.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Abel, seconded by Mr. Hancock. All those in favor, raise your hands. That vote is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're done.
Good. Not too bad, it'll be 36 minutes left, scheduled time.